You got a deal right there. Smack it.
Next time, this is minutes.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Fellersell.
Can I address the board at this point? Did you just approve the minutes?
Yeah.
As far as I know, the minutes are not available for review by the public until after you approve them. And I just want to know if the minutes reflect my attendance at last week's meeting, what we discussed and that sort of thing. That's what I mean. So I have no idea of knowing what was discussed is in there or not without coming here and asking. So...
At this time, when they make the motion to approve the minutes, that's at the time that you can ask. If they request it in the board minutes. Otherwise, it's in your homework in regard to the published because that gives the board the opportunity to approve the minutes that accurately reflect what took place at that meeting.
Okay.
So, at the time that that motion was made, that's when the board...
Well, okay.
I understand you're saying we can't review this.
Right, and I...
No.
Well, we can.
Not to review because those minutes are unapproved.
So if you have a problem with the minutes, will you call me and we can...
Well, I could... Okay, so if I have a question about it, I can review them, come back and...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
JD.
Morning. What we have this morning is approximately two weeks ago today, I believe the day was, that we had a meeting out at the Santa Center with Mr. Boykin, myself, representative from the extension and one of the board members. For quite a while, Woodbury County has had one member of the extension on our county health insurance. At the county extension, there is a lot of Iowa State University extension people out there, but their insurance is provided through Iowa State. The county extension people are not offered insurance through that because they're not employees of Iowa State. Rather, they're Woodbury County extension employees. The request was made to come before the board after they have done some study to become participants of the Woodbury County self-funded health insurance plan. I think we had a good meeting with them, we provided them with information as it relates to the health insurance we have, its aspects, its cost. And in doing that, this would include a total of eight people that they would have who would be full-time people to be insured if the board so decides to approve this. And there would be no insurance provided for part-time people. As the new laws on the insurance says, anybody that works thirty or more hours per week, employers of certain functions have to provide them with health insurance. We talked with our consultant, met with Denny, and looked at their overall status of our health plan. They, both of them agree, and I agree, that it is not going to jeopardize our health plan in any way. That they are Woodbury County, even though they aren't county-county, it's a health insurance plan that they would like to become a part of, share in. They would pick the total cost for this. It's very similar to what we did with the, out there on the landfill. And I think it's something we should give consideration to, that we provide a value of service. And we have had one of them on our plan for quite a long time.
Mr. Fellersell. We've been reviewing the system as put in the levels. So speakers come to the podium if you have something to say.
Will you say all that again? No.
But I would support, you know, the recommendation. I've been working with Sherry and the chairman of the extension board here for the last number of months, in fact, last year. And we are not setting a precedence on this. It's not going to affect, you know, our plan in any way in a detrimental manner. It will provide the coverage that these folks need, so... And working with JD and also Mr. Ed Gillian, there's not going to be a problem with this whatsoever.
The ideal thing would be is, as Gloria and I have been talking up in our office, is to, with these eight people, the goal would be to put them on the plan effective April 1st. Now, we're approaching mid-end month. But what we would ask the extension to do is to bring all their eight people in at one time. We'd go up on the eighth floor of the courthouse here. We would do our orientation, we would go through all the SPD and all the necessary paperwork and get it accomplished all at one time. Everybody hears the same thing and we move forward.
Second it.
Discussion.
I have a question. Will this open up more people coming in for the insurance?
That I can't answer. We did it with the landfill because they had a tie with board. We already have one of them on our plan right now. So it's not really changing or adding a whole new entity. It's adding more individuals from already an insured individual of that group to our plan.
I have the same question too, but I was trying to think of who would those groups be.
Yeah, that's why I asked JD.
They'd only have to be associated with the county.
Yeah, I don't know.
And the same kind of relationship, that would be the only thing. So it would be limited. And we have most of those groups covered anyway.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. It'll be very nice.
So much to remember now.
Next time, is approval of Woodbury County, approval of appointments to Woodbury County Extension Council. Is there a motion?
I'd move that Lillian Gonzalez, Guy Ayton Rodriguez be appointed.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next time, is Chris's for suspension of taxes for LT.
I'd move it. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Patty.
This board has before you a 208E agreement that was drafted by Joshua and another attorney, local attorney, to formalize the agreement between the four entities working together for the development of the Woodbury County Expo Center. We located it on the fairgrounds in Mobile. And it describes and lays out the working relationship of those four entities and how the project can proceed to completion.
I would just like to say that this agreement has been in limbo here for the last, I don't know how many months, and it's been thoroughly gone through by, you know, our attorneys and by the fair board and everyone that's been involved in this thing. And I just think that it's just one more step closer to us developing this possibility of the Expo Center in Mobile. There's a lot of potential here. We've got a lot of commitments already from the private sector. This is one step closer to us seeing this thing coming to completion. So I would encourage us to design the agreement. So I'd so move.
First second.
I'd move further discussion.
Patty, what, I know there's always been a 208E from the beginning, there was one written, correct?
Correct.
Before I ever came on board. Could you just highlight a couple of things that maybe have changed since then or what's different?
Actually, it hasn't been much to change.
Okay.
The original agreement was a memorandum of understanding, a development agreement.
Or say...
And what the 208E has done is more legally commit the entities and describe that working relationship. And it is what really is required to spell out those requirements and responsibilities for each of the four entities that are working together. The city of Mobile, the fair board, and the private, or the tab all sign this agreement and the tab all agree with it. So I think this really formalizes what it is. And that's why some of it took so long to get from that memorandum of understanding and a development agreement into the legal language and so that, you know, the intention remained the same. It is surprisingly, over the years, maintained that original, you know, a developmental agreement just to formalize it and then specify responsibilities.
I have a question.
Okay.
Two point zero, one point zero thirty. Is that always in there? Says we will provide salary to the fancy facility director and operating budget for the Expo Center. And then after it's fully or financially self-sustaining, you will no longer be obligated to pay that?
That is always one of the problems with it. The county would have the responsibility for the operating budget. You know, maintain that three or four year term period until the center maintains all sustain, which the projections show that that should be obtained by year three. But the county would look at other factors as well rather than just the revenue and expenses of the facility as to the increase in the local option sales tax, the business development. We've got three business entities. There's a hotel, I'm sorry, more than that now, there's a hotel, there's two gas stations, and there's a restaurant and a restaurant lounge scheduled for development as soon as the building is formalized and built. So it has tremendous economic impact for the city of Mobile. And depending on where they lie out there, whether or not the local option sales tax generated would be okay in Woodbury County or in the city of Mobile. So it's got tremendous economic impact as well as job opportunities, part-time, full-time, the folks that are paying. Even the original building for the hotel, high school, kids working, that should say, working at the center, the revenue driving the model.
What would a salary be for that?
The salary that was with the director, during the year, what he paid for, I think the original contract seller for the executive director would have given the facility a seventy, seventy-two thousand dollars. Because they keep that facility full and have the revenue off of that guy at the range and there is events to occur.
The director be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The original conversation of the debt, operation funding, commoditization. I suppose that was...
Right.
The county was, was, the original agreement said the county was obligating itself towards the operation.
So what does that mean? Clarify it, I don't, I guess I'd be, what does that mean?
That means to me that based on the number of events that it's going to be self-sustaining, that the number of events that goes on out there, and we feel that, based on my experience in a way, we attended, I have attended, me and Larry, an event down in Waverly, Iowa where it was called the Hawkeye Paternity. And that event should have been held here in the state of Iowa, but we did not have a facility to do it here. And they are, it seems to be tremendous money generating kinds of events that they do have. So I don't, I really don't have much doubt in my mind that, based on what we've learned through our experience in attending these things, and also based on the experience of Mr. Hodges back there, that this Expo Center, once it is built, it is going to be busy and full all of the time. And that the salary and also the expenses and the operation of the facility will come out of the events and the things that will transpire down there.
The first source for that work is, is the revenue and so it's... Times application was for to spend high debt and supplement if necessary. Otherwise, the revenue would spend just for the operation would go towards the retirement or the provision of those expenses because they're all included in the budget and there is performance.
So does that mean we borrow money to pay or can we grant money to pay for that? Because the revenues, unless you bring on, maybe it's a question, it's a plan to bring the director on it before the center opens? I mean, who books all the...
That's, that's the plan, that's the first thing when we start constructions, you want to lock the fire somewhere.
Right.
Build this room. All the usual by projections. The question is, is it, the only problem that is big stick or is we counted on federal funds and state grants? These have been drying up. So the whole project is injected until there's a way to figure out how to plan it. Once it's financed, then the county, the county operation, there will be a war. There's a hiring, you know, it seems that the, it's run for, that it would be a county responsibility. And that's, when this was first voted on, county decided that responsibility. And now, hopefully, and the projections are correct, you do gather enough money to build this store. It should be self-sustaining in three years. The first three years, the county could be on the floor. Operations, it may not be, but it's possible. All the numbers, all the sources, all are part of it.
Right.
And that, that is not...
Well, the original conversation was there would be no tax money in there.
And it's still, it's still in the original conversation.
In that paragraph, what's the end of that? It doesn't say three years, it doesn't say, it kind of says whenever we decide.
Where are you at, Mark, again, two?
Five.
I mean, I think they're valid questions, you know, when...
Well, there's all the...
You guys have been, right, have sat in on a meeting, so you probably have a deeper understanding than both of us. You know, you kind of float in and out every once in a while in a meeting. And I guess, I just don't know how you do it if you don't have federal or state funds.
Well, we're still investigating those, those, those resources and still investigating, you know, the way in which we're going to do it. But that's not written in concrete yet.
That paragraph goes back to one oh, one point oh five and one point oh six. Yeah, it is addressed there, that the county at all times after four years of center operations shall have the authority to determine whether the center has met its goals. And if it doesn't, we can choose to dissolve.
Right, right.
I think it's a great project. I just want to make sure I understand, as I vote on this today, exactly what I think the implications are as far as for the county and our responsibility.
The implications are that it's formalizing the 208E agreement. Directing, some language was not addressed.
Right.
It does not commit us in any way, shape, or form financially unless it's built. And then we've got the operation responsibility. Unless the income from it or the money gathered to begin with, it depends on what the price of the project we come in at. And, you know, how much money is there for operations. Plus, there's the signs to sell in there.
Who's taking the profit from the signs to sell?
It goes to the center.
It goes to the 208E. Not, okay.
Jackie, it wouldn't help to, it's provided in the 208E that no, the ground, ground is not broken until all the money is raised. And then there's also a drop dead date that all the money has to be raised by, I believe it's September of fourteen.
That's a difference from before then, isn't it? Sunset date.
And that, and that was the major difference, and you're right, Jackie. The major difference with this is that it has a definitive date. The other agreement that was signed by all parties just carried on. There was no deadline date, nothing in it, which, you know, nobody even realized or thought of until we were even a couple of years, a hundred. So that was a point of discussion, which is definitely included in the next September, but I think February, two thousand and fourteen.
This is just one step toward what we're trying to accomplish. And we're just taking this a step at a time. And as Larry said too, it is not financially commit this board to anything yet. We're still working on how we're going to work out the financing. We've got people that have made financial commitments. We don't have any money in the bank, but it will, it will materialize. So I have complete confidence in that.
There's some grants out there.
Yeah.
People who qualify for...
And there's, and there's still possible...
A little hole pot there, is there?
And there's still possibilities of some state dollars coming in. I'm working on that with our state economic development person. So that's out there. It just takes a lot of work and time.
More questions from the board?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Denny?
James of Rockin Taxpayers Research Council, 516 Nebraska Street. I want to make sure I understand this. If the building is built and if there aren't enough revenues made from the events that are held, the county would help supplement their budget to make them viable, correct?
If it is a county operation, the revenue after three years is projected to be much greater than the operating expense.
Okay, but the initial three years, the county would help fund some dollars possibly?
Possibly.
Possibly, yeah, that's the key. Now, would those possible dollars be tax dollars or you're hoping to get grants to actually do that?
We're hoping to get grants or...
So you're hoping, so it could still be tax dollars, okay.
It's...
Is there a maximum amount that you're willing to give if...
We haven't reached that point yet.
Okay, so this could be open-ended right now?
We haven't reached that point yet. We're putting this thing together piece by piece and step by step. And if we reach a point where we feel it's impossible, then we can back out of the deal.
So we wouldn't necessarily be looking at five hundred thousand dollars a year or...
No, no.
If it even looks like it would be going there, it would be a...
Right, no, we don't want...
Is there any idea of how much an oper, one year of operating would, would, could cost the county?
Oh, cost the county?
Cost the county?
I don't know, we haven't...
The whole operating budget would be for a year?
Yeah, there's been estimates drawn up, I believe.
What would that be?
You have a...
I think about three hundred thousand.
About three hundred thousand? Okay, so that would be probably the maximum of a county participant.
Yeah, if everything went sour, but we don't...
That's what I understand, we don't want it to.
No.
I'm not hoping it does.
If there's no events...
I'm trying to understand the maximum.
Yeah, if there was...
And I think it's a reason, that's what I'm trying to do too. And, you know, maybe at some point in time I'll say, change the mind if it's close and it looks good. Who knows, maybe a couple of years down the road, if we're still at it, we may say a few tax dollars have to be used. I just want to know.
But if it will not be a couple of years because the end date on this is September two thousand and fourteen, that's a year and a half.
Whether or not it gets built?
Right.
So maximum liability is roughly around three hundred thousand.
If there's no events going on...
If there's no events or anything.
Yeah. And that's just, that's just not a possibility.
I want to be positive, but I want to make sure I understand the...
It would strictly be the payroll or...
Lights, things like, so this would be a property tax exempt as well, I'm assuming?
Yeah. Because we're the owner of the property right now. The only, the asset would be the new building down there. That's the new asset. And that's not a negative for the county, that's a positive as far as...
Is it a fair asset or county asset?
County.
It'd be a county asset.
Alright.
Okay, okay.
This is with Patty afterwards because you've got all the numbers.
Yeah, and that's what I just talked to James about. I said I'd like to talk to him because I want to make sure that he and I are both asking the same questions.
Well, that's why we're taking it a step at a time. We're not going to commit the county or the, or the public to this until we have all of the answers.
But aren't you agreeing to that?
We're agreeing to this, this agreement right now. That's one of the steps in collaboration with, with us, the county fair, the city of Mobile. And we're all working in this thing together. And if it doesn't come to fruition, as you say, we do have a drop dead date in twenty fourteen. If it doesn't materialize, it goes away.
So what are the next steps?
The next steps is basically to find the additional dollars to, to complete the project. And, and that would be through grants, through state grants. And we're still pursuing the possibility of even finding some more dollars at the, at the federal level. That doesn't seem too realistic at this point, based on what's going on in Washington right now, Jim. But there's still that possibility out there and we're still working on that, on that possibility.
Those dollars go toward capital or toward the operating?
They'd go, they'd go toward the construction of the, of the facility.
Unless you still have, you're doing the fundraising.
Right.
So does this come back to the board another time?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, this is just a 208E agreement, it's telling you how, for what is going to happen. But before you go into construction, or turn the first...
It's kind of dirt.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Can I ask Joshua a question? So then what would come back as a formal thing next? What is, what kind of document then follows this one up?
There could be a formal recognition that all the money is raised and that it's able to be, the construction can start. I don't know that that would necessarily have to come through the board at that point. One thing that would, once it's built, the operating budget is subject to the normal budgeting process. And so, that would have to come through the normal budgeting channels at budget timing. And it would be, you know, subject to additions or deletions or, you know, just like any other department that comes through budgeting process.
All of that. Does this agreement force the county to have to vote something for the center?
During the first three years, the agreement says that the county will supply the operating budget.
So whether it's one dollar or three hundred thousand dollars, they have to do something?
It just says the county will supply the operating budget and the budget is subject to the normal budgetary process.
Would they, so if they budgeted no dollars for it, would they be liable at this point in the agreement?
They are obligated to provide a salary to the director. So I think that not providing a salary would be a breach of the...
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Regina?
Hello, everybody. For those of you that may not remember, I'm Regina from RML Architects. And I'm here today to do about three things. First of all, I'd like to give you an update on the ASAP project. I'd also like to request a change order for that project and your permission to obtain a request for proposal. I sure can. Thank you for letting me know. My voice does not travel well, whether you amplify it or whether I speak without it.
Or put on both the other level.
That doesn't give you too much feedback, does it? Is that okay? Okay, alright. So just to give you a brief review... All right, um, so just to give you a brief review of the ASAP project, we moved the ASAP room from the second floor to the first floor in order to give the jail, um, a little more space in the booking area. And we did that separately so that we would not hold up anything to do with the security upgrades. And we have met that goal, so successfully, the ASAP room has been moved, and, uh, it is not holding up our security electronics. Um, the item that I would like to request for a change order is a seventy-five dollar item. There are existing panic switches in the second floor area that we would like to move to the first floor area, that will save the county about two hundred and fifty dollars if we reuse those switches. However, L and L, they finished their work except for that. Uh, so that's about seventy-five dollars worth of labor, they finished their work in about December, so they've been hanging on for that seventy-five dollars for a few months now, and what we would like to do is remove that portion of the contract for L and L, so that we can close out that contract. But what that would require is that we approach Audino for a request for proposal to move those switches. So, that's the permission I'm here to get from you, is may we remove those switches from the L and L contract? And may we obtain a proposal from Audino for that same work?
That one motion?
It could be, but, so everybody's gotten involved with it here. You're taking the money away from L and L, are we doing that in-house, you know, sort of?
I didn't hear you, could you say that one more time?
Are we doing that in-house with the switches, or who's gonna do that work?
Well, right now, it's in the contract for L and L's contractors to do that work. And that's what I'm requesting, is that we eliminate it from their workload, and we request Audino to do that work.
Is that okay with L and L?
That, that is why I'm approaching you, is because that's what L and L had proposed to us. And, uh, we've, uh, we've talked to the owner's representative, and they don't seem to have any concerns with this change, and so now we're here for your approval.
Bottom line is, L and L doesn't wanna send somebody out here to do a little bitty job when Audino's already worked.
No, that's, that's not it, um, i- in fact, we, we're not able to move those switches until the cameras for the security system are in place. And so, so L and L's sort of hanging on until those cameras go in, and at this point in time, it looks like it'll be sometime after May for that. And, uh, and so it's just, um, kind of a kindness, uh, to everybody involved, uh, to release them from their, their contract, they've fulfilled it ninety-nine point nine percent of the way.
I'd move it.
I'm sorry?
Do you want their check?
They, they will get their check, um, but they're, they're reducing the price of the check by seventy-five dollars.
Well, Audino do it for seventy-five dollars?
That I can't answer, so that's my other question, is do you give me the permission to ask them to do the work? That's the other part of the piece.
Yep. It is.
My dollars.
Well, well certainly, uh, whatever the proposal is, it'll come back to you, and you'll have the opportunity to approve that as well.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Close.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additionally, I have three copies of that change order that I'll need the chair's signature on, may I leave that? And these three copies have been signed and just need to have the county's signature and, and then, uh, distributed to the three parties. Thank you.
Michelle?
Good morning.
Morning, Michelle.
Um, I have a couple of items for you today, the first one is a routine, um, indirect cost proposal, need a, a signature for, so that we can request indirect costs in our grant reimbursements. Um, we average about five hundred dollars per month that we've been requesting, and this one will speed for fiscal year twenty fourteen, starting July first.
Is there a motion?
Gonna be authorized the same.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
The second item I have for you, I presented a proposal in a formal letter to eliminate two positions from our main office, um, in the Homeland Security Department of the Department. Uh, the reason for this is that we have an increasing grant funding in the personnel area, and we do still have funds for training and equipment. However, um, the state Homeland Security Grant Program has not provided us with enough funds to, um, have three personnel within the office. So, the proposal is to eliminate two positions beginning October first of this year. Um, that will allow for us to work through to the end of the grant period, which is June thirtieth of twenty fourteen. Give us now the opportunity to entertain us, there are new grants that come up that will, um, allow us to sustain our office for, for the future. The twenty thirteen grant funding, uh, grant, uh, guidance has not been issued by the federal government yet. The state is requesting for applications to be intended for, for that grant period, however, at this time, I have heard that there's a five percent, um, deduction in route for state and locals in that area. So, it's uncertain if we'll have any, uh, money awarded for intelligence information, Charlie.
What, what is this gonna be your operation?
Um, it's gonna cause one person to be a lot busier. Right now, we work under two grants, there's the Information and Intelligence Sharing Grant and the National Infrastructure Protection Grant. The National Infrastructure Protection Grant has not been continued for the twenty twelve fiscal year, so starting October first, we will no longer have that grant and those grant requirements. And that is twenty-five percent of our functions of the office is going out to critical infrastructure, doing assessments, um, communicating with private sector, the public sector, and, and, um, so we do not have that funding anymore. So, it's gonna be a lot busier for one person. Uh, the information sharing will continue, that's the main focus, is to share information with local enforcement about what is going on in the region, so that, um, things can be related to each other and trying to be convenient and solid.
So, June thirtieth, the grants are all finished.
It has not been officially announced that they will be finished, um, it's all gonna depend, um, on what the state decides, um, and it's gonna be a much more competitive process, is what I've been told. But until we have a federal guidance saying how much goes to local, how much goes to law enforcement, we won't know.
Does this sequester have anything to do with this, Michelle, I mean, with the reduction in?
Five percent, I believe it does. But the number's not been issued, so we don't know if the states are gonna be issued the same amount, or if they're gonna portion it out the same way that they have the tax.
It started out at six, seven hundred thousand, and it's down to what now?
Um, for personnel, we have, uh, eight five thousand, six hundred and eighteen, and, um, over here, around a hundred and twenty thousand for this will be. And the grant overlaps, so we're able to use some funds to give to the local and the state. Yes, or indirect costs are able to replace, uh, two, um, a hundred percent fund through the grants.
Two, three years ago, they, didn't they tell us you couldn't put new tires on the cars, you couldn't wash them?
It's just ridiculous.
Yes, my second, if, um, we're talking about.
Yeah, you sure were, my God, Michelle, you terrible.
We will continue, we will continue, like, there are all kinds of things that are not, but unfortunately, the information sharing may not continue to be sufficient, that functions of our office are amazing, and we can spend some law enforcement, and very well, uh, help give the information out to everyone. And someone else with the functions of our office are not that official, which is the fact that the money's not there.
That's the, we all know that going in, that it's a problem with grants, we've talked about it in the past, they all have a sunset. But their information sharing and intel has been so helpful, because they're a hundred percent committed to that, whereas we have other deputies doing collateral duties, so. It, it has been good, but we do recognize that if it ends, uh, then we'll rely back on lean, and that'll be obligating one of our guys to, you know, add another duty, but, uh, we're hopeful with Michelle, uh, that we've sat and talked, hate to eliminate two positions, but there's no money, we get that. But by keeping her on longer and keeping it viable, maybe she can find grants, and eventually, we can bring those two back, uh, you know, that's, I think, kind of our goal here, that's why we've, we could've eliminated it all in, uh, September, October, but we thought, hey, let's at least try to keep it going till, till it's, there is nothing there, so.
I move on to the.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. This is the sheriff's signature.
They've always written that, and I'll have to probably change that, because I think the state is, you know, I don't think it's. We've always had the board sign.
Larry would love it.
Sheriff in town, don't let him do it.
I would, I would say this, at the end of, if it doesn't go, that the county will inherit all the, I think, how it was originally.
It is, all of the equipment is owned by the county, and, uh, that.
Buy new tires, and you're gonna have to wash them.
Well, there is some very good equipment there that we can be using, besides a couple of vehicles.
We will, we will probably have to, when we have official documentation of what, we'll not be in the period, and we'll probably have to present another report as to what we was doing with the equipment. And at this point, I wasn't really comfortable stating anything about that because of the uncertainty right now, there's a potential that we could exist longer than due to twenty fourteen, until we know that for a fact. I, we can think about it, but I don't wanna have concrete knowledge yet.
I'm gonna sign this for the sheriff.
Loving that part, aren't you?
Yeah. That helped me out, you know, don't let me hang.
Well, we appreciate the information, we can apply it. Now, are it, two vehicles, two vehicles we have?
We have four vehicles, three that we use for personnel within the office, and we have, uh, everyone's paying us.
What are we gonna do with them after?
Well, considering one of them has over a hundred thousand miles, um, doesn't have a lot to do with last year.
But they have to be parked somewhere.
Sell them.
Sell them.
That's what I don't think we can do alone, yet. No, I mean, we can't do it until it's all done. Right. Right.
Do, uh? You're a truck man.
Go to you.
Thank you.
Paul?
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, we've got a business meeting, and we have a meeting for me.
All right, sir.
First thing I'd be doing today, we have a, a clear approval of a permit working away, and Charles Lawrence came, he used a property on twenty six, he has some clearing, grumby, and he asked to be cleared around where it's, you know, the trees are dark.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
Second item is, is a renewable contract bond, but the project that we worked a few weeks ago, and it's been, uh, sealed by the state. Twelve seconds, you're on the T fifty-four, and then very black out, the alarm.
Move it. Oh, sorry, move it.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion carries.
I'd like to see if also, consider approval of the contract bond, for the project that we're, uh, sealed by the state. That's the, uh, pulled that for place, but it would be taken from two to one seventy-five, two of our employees.
Move it. Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
Good, you think we're sent back tomorrow?
Thank you, Ben.
Is there any concerns on the board?
Yes, no, it's not a concern. But I have something to share, that I hope would find interesting when I was at ASAP. I just think there's, um, no need to worry about anyone, and this is not attracted to anybody, the age one is as our supervisor, because I met a supervisor who was eighty-nine years old, and he was considering reelection.
What's wrong with people? Are you listening?
That's true story, he was eighty-nine.
Is that right? Wow.
Do people have anything better to do? Oh, wait.
Now, what could be better than this?
Hey, what, what does that do to the mess? Absolutely, David, come on.
How many years was he on the board? That's what you should have asked.
Not sure, I mean, several, twenty years, maybe. Twenty five, yeah, he's a newbie. I just share that as information.
Question from the audience? We stand the jury.